My seven-year-old grandson, who's on first day of vacation, is already born.
You better get your craft box out.
My wife has all kinds of crafts, making butterflies and painting rocks.
I can give you some good ideas.
If you're ready, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then I'd like to everyone share a moment of silence for those in Orlando, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our June 13 business meeting. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Fieser for student staff recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. London. I want to begin before we have public and student recognition. I'd like to introduce our new principal of Orange Avenue, so I'll ask Ms. Apicelli to come up. This is Joe Apicelli, who is going to be the principal of Orange Avenue beginning on July 1. He has 12 years of experience with the Ansonia Public Schools. He was a teacher in third grade, I believe, for six years, and then he became an assistant principal at Pendergrass School and ultimately principal of 700 students in his elementary school in Ansonia. And so we're thrilled to have him join us. I know he's thrilled to be here with us, and we wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity as board members. And so maybe I'd ask him to go around and shake everybody's hands.
Sure.
How are you? Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good work.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Nice to have you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
So if you should know, there's already been a meet and greet with parents that have occurred, so he's had an opportunity to meet a number of parents. He's also been to the school more than once before school closed, and so got an opportunity to meet kids. More importantly, he also, I think, met the entire staff. So when he starts in July, at least he's already been in the building. And I know there's been many a conversation and some meetings with Carol Swift as well as part of the transition for him going into the school. I'm absolutely confident that it'll be a smooth transition, and as I said, we're just very excited about it.
Thank you.
And the next person I want to recognize is no stranger to all of you. I don't think he is, and that's Mr. Jay Rowe. But before I have him come up, I'm going to talk a little bit about him. Those of you that don't know Jay Rowe may not realize that he is, this is the gentleman that's sitting right here in the center with the red tie on, who is, he's a lifelong Milford resident, actually a foreign grad. He's met great success as a world-renowned jazz musician, circling the globe with the elite in the world of jazz. Jay has performed his craft in South America, Europe, Africa, Asia, and of course throughout the United States. As a solo artist, he has recorded and released five CDs, including the very successful Live at Daniel Street, which was released in 2011. While Jay has enjoyed great success in the world of jazz, he never forgot that his journey started right here in Milford, at Cathben Metal Elementary School and later at Foreign High. Back in the spring of 2003, Jay wanted to thank the educators who helped him at the beginning of his journey, and as a result, he founded the annual Smooth Jazz for Scholars Benefit Concert. And ever since then, he has held the Smooth Jazz for Scholars Concert for the past 14 years. This high-profile event draws jazz enthusiasts from a wide geographical region, with many fans coming from out of state. Since its inception, Jay has donated more than $60,000 for the benefit of the Milford Public Schools music program. I had the opportunity to attend again this year's concert, and I have to tell you, the place was hopping. And one of the exciting pieces, and Jay has done this before, he invited students from West Shore as well as from Foreign to come and perform onstage as part of the concert. And so if you could have seen these middle school students who were in, Chris Calathus' class, up there with their guitars and, you know, and some soloists, it was just such an incredible experience for them. And then the Foreign Jazz Band also performed, and the audience loved both of them. Jay was so gracious as to remind everybody, this is why we're holding, this is why we're having the concerts, you know? So it was just terrific. And so I know that Jay has come here this evening. We want to honor him, but I know you're also going to be providing us again with some support, so I don't want to steal your thunder. So I'll stop there and introduce you, Jay, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah. Well, it's always a pleasure to do this show. It's been 14 years. It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun, you know? And it's always a pleasure to get the students involved, because that's ultimately what it's all about. And, you know, we're just, I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. I can't believe it's been 14 years. Next year will be 15, and, you know, I think I'm young enough to keep going for another 15. God willing. So we'll be doing this a lot. So it's a pleasure to do it. You know, I'm very appreciative of all the, you know, the local sponsors, Milford Bank, Barrett Outdoor Communications, Courtney Honda, Bridger Patch Enterprises, and, you know, the fans that come from all over the tri-state area, across the country, and the residents of Milford who attend the show every year. So I'm happy to keep doing it, and it's always a pleasure.
So I understand you have something you want to present us?
Yeah. Do you mind taking a picture? Thanks so much. All right, there we go. Okay.
So Jay is presenting. You want to say how much you want to present?
Yeah. Once again, we had another great year, so it's my pleasure to present $8,000 to the Milford Public School Music System Music Department activity.
So now with this, we're talking about close to $70,000. That is, and it literally goes and...
A little more.
A little more than that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's almost $75.
Is that $75?
Oh.
Wow, that's incredible. And I know Jessica is here. You can attest to some of the instruments that you've received as a result of this. And the music goes, I mean, the money goes only into the music programs, and it goes in elementary, middle, and high school. So it really has made a difference, and we cannot thank you enough for your incredible support and for the concerts. They are just fabulous.
Yeah. Well, it's my pleasure. And hopefully, we'll, you know, we're thinking about expanding it. We might add another day next year. You know, next year's the 15th one, so that's somewhat of a milestone. And, you know, we have a lot of support, so we're going to see how much we can grow this thing.
That's great.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come.
No, my pleasure.
We really appreciate it. Super. Well, thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Mr. Ritt.
Thanks a lot.
My pleasure.
What a great job this year. Do that paper for someone to do those open.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right. Can't forget my phone.
And the last recognition we have this evening is one of the most exciting recognitions, I believe, in the course of the year, and that is our Student Art Recognition. So we have four students that we're going to honor. I'll hold off on naming them in a minute. I do want to say that we have art teachers, Megan Hudson and Charlene Romansky, who are here. I see Megan. Sorry. It's hard when you're looking at the sea of faces. So let me just talk with you, because some of the board members are new and may not know what we're, why we're so excited about tonight. With school dismissing for the year a little earlier this year, it was not possible to invite our art winners to the May Board Meeting. We usually bring this event to May, but because we've kind of lost some time this year, so we're using this meeting and so delighted that the students were still able to come, even though school is over and there are teachers. What we are here tonight to do is to recognize outstanding work of our students in the Milford Public Schools, and we cannot say enough about the magnificent talent that we possess, which is a real tribute to the teachers who are working with our students. Each spring, the employees and visitors to Parsons absolutely love when the art festivals occur, when the art shows occur. In fact, they're so popular that we used to have elementary, we used to have it all together, like elementary, middle, and high, and you literally could not walk through the halls, there were so many people. So we've divided it. We now have an elementary show, a middle school show, and a high school show. And when the walls, if any of you had an opportunity to see any of the art shows this year, you know what we're talking about. When the walls, when the artwork comes down, it's a shock for any of us that work here to walk into the building, and you're just looking at these naked walls. Every year, the pieces created by our students generate discussion among the staff and the community. We see community people continually, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, stopping and talking about, you know, different pieces. And what we're also astounded by is the respect that's paid to the pieces. We don't have pieces, I was so afraid pieces would be stolen this year, because they're just incredible pieces of work, and they weren't. So that's a real tribute to the community. You can hear people talking in the hallway, strangers to strangers, staff to visitors. It doesn't matter the combination of people. The sentiment is all the same, this sort of, wow, I can't believe that these are kids that are creating this. Over the years, the pieces being displayed have just been phenomenal, and the talent of our students and what they possess is just so, so impressive. When I came into the district six years ago, I talked with board members at the time and said, you know, what would you think about us starting to purchase artwork, senior artwork from both Foreign and Law, and starting a permanent collection at Milford Public Schools of student work? And the board at that time was supportive of it. So what we have done since 2012 is that each year, pieces of artwork created by two seniors at Foreign and two seniors at Law are selected, and they become, again, a piece of the permanent collection. And if you ever walk into the superintendent's office and you see artwork on the walls and straight ahead, et cetera, that's all artwork that's been purchased over the last five years, really beautiful pieces, all of our students, and it's permanently owned by the school system. So now I want to share with you what was selected this year, and invite the students to come up when I call your name. And what we're going to do is have the students come up, and I'll introduce each student, and we'll see their piece. And then I'm going to ask each of them to talk a little bit about the piece. Here's the actual piece that was on the walls as part of the display, but we took a photo so that people at home, and you also could see it better than just over here. And then also get an understanding of, you know, what kind of medium was it, you know, what was used in the creation of it, what the theme was, the title of it, maybe why the artist selected, chose to do the piece, et cetera. So this year's selections were created by Thomas Kinross and Casey McDonald from Jonathan Law. Let me hear. And Serena Lambiasi and Julia Pereira from Foreign. If they, you both would come up, that would be wonderful. So I believe Serena, yours is the first piece, am I correct? Which is a piece of hope, so can I ask you to come up a little bit here and just talk with, really, what, I'll say for myself, I'm not an artist, so when I see artwork like this, I want to know more about it, and I'm sure our board members do as well. So if you could speak to the piece and...
So I made this piece with watercolor and model print, and I used it to show, well, for the pieces to show, the assignment was to show addiction, and I used it to show sort of like the person's world crashing down on them and starting to lose hope, and the colorful part is the hope that they had, and like their colorful world, and now that it's the black and the gray is sort of taking in, taking over.
Mr. Ritt. So stay here, okay? We're going to then hear from other folks as well. And this is, is this vulnerable acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Julia, so can you speak to the board and explain your piece?
My piece I made for my concentration section in my EP portfolio. My concentration was the concept of vulnerability and nudity among society, and this was part of one of the four sections, which was resilience, acceptance, restriction, and harmony. And this was acceptance, vulnerable acceptance. And it's the fine line between acceptable and unacceptable, so the fabric is kind of loosely there, but it's not overcoming, and it's not completely gone, so. Oh, and I also used it on truckle and graphic pencil.
So it's pencil that you used? Okay.
It's tacos.
Thomas, do you want to talk about your piece next?
This is a trihook.
Can you speak a little louder?
Sorry. This is a picture I took, and I was trying to focus on two elements in photography, and those two elements are color and line. So I used the trees as the line element, and then the leaves on the trees as the color element. And these are my two favorite elements of photography. I just feel that they express a lot in a picture, and it's just, I don't know, just my favorite.
And the title of it? My understanding is it's Looking Beyond the Trees?
Yes, because the person in there is my sister, and she is facing, looking down the trees, and that's how I came up with the title.
That's great. That's great. Again, beautiful.
Thank you.
And Casey?
So for this piece, I took it as part of the portraiture unit we did in my photography class. And for each of our units, we do one experimental series and then two series based on two different master photographers. So this one, I was part of a master photographer series, and I based it off of the work of George Earl, who was a famous photographer in old Hollywood. He would take pictures of actors and actresses like Marilyn Monroe, Humphrey Bogart. So I was trying to emulate that look of old Hollywood, so I used studio lighting to try and soften her features, because a lot of those photos, they just focused on really soft features, and they were all in black and white, because it was black and white film was what you had to work with. So I just wanted to really have really sharp contrasting, contrast in this as well, so it would work in black and white. And also, I just really love the look of old Hollywood, especially because I plan to go into film, so it's just really a look that fascinates me, so that's why I went with that.
Artists. So can you all talk about where you, what school you're going to next year, what you're going to be majoring in?
I'm going to Southern, but I'm in science right now.
That's okay.
I'm going to Lime Academy of Fine Arts in Old Line, and I'm majoring in Fine Arts in Lime.
I'm going to Emerson College in Boston, and I'm going to be majoring in Film Production.
I'm going to Huse Tomic, and I'm planning to major in Business.
That's great. Well, we wish you all the best, and we have a certificate for you and also an honorarium, because we give them a small honorarium in light of the fact that we now have one of their pieces, and so we want to congratulate you. Would we, would ask if you would just shake the hand with all the board members?
Then ask, congratulations.
Very powerful. Congratulations.
I loved your piece.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
You did a great job.
Then hand your next one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great work.
Great job.
Congratulations.
I like color.
I'm a bobby upstairs.
One good marrow.
Thank you.
So one more thing I would just say is that what we do with these pieces now is we will actually have them formally framed at one of the centers in town. Mr. Griffin, where do we send them? The yard plate?
Carriage on the green.
Carriage, yeah. Carriage on the green?
Carriage on the green.
Carriage on the green. And they do just a fabulous job, and we have a plate that's always put on it that has the name of the student, has the title of the piece, has the high school that they attended, and then also the year. And again, so then that's how it becomes part of the permanent collection. So it's really exciting, and Mr. Burt said to me about three weeks ago, when the art show just before the high school art show was to end, he said, well, so can I get some art pieces? And that's what will start to happen, which will be just fabulous. So congratulations to all of our students. You have no idea how you brighten so many of our lives, and your talent is just absolutely exceptional, and we're so excited about the fact that we have a permanent piece of your artwork. So thank you very much. And to the parents, congratulations on your sons and daughters as well.
Thank you. Very good. Congratulations again. So before we move into public comment, if any of you, we don't expect you guys to stay for the entire meeting, you're more than welcome to, but if you'd like to head out, feel free. And we're going to move into our public comments section now in the rest of our board meeting. You're welcome. Thank you. So I'm going to read the public comments statement. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act. Discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised, meetings are live on Channel 78 on cablevision. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the chairs report. So I'd like to thank the board for all the extra time you put in the last couple of weeks for attending the various award ceremonies and the graduations. And for me, it's kind of the culmination of the year, and I really love being able to go to them, but I know it's a lot of nights out, so I just want to thank everybody for taking that extra time. I want to remind you that we don't have a committee of the whole meeting in June, July or August, but I just want to remind the board that we may hold some workshops during that time. So we already on June 20th have, that's next Monday at 7:00 PM, a grievance hearing scheduled, and then on the 27th at 6:30, we will have meet for Dr. Fieser's evaluation. And then our August regular business meeting is held on the fourth Monday, so August 22nd will be our business meeting. There's no meeting the second Monday of August at this time. I just wanted to let you know, I got a nice note from Mrs. Edo, who was the staff member at West Shore who coordinates the WAVE program, and she is thanking us for allowing the students to come in to present to us about the WAVE program. They were really proud to come in and do so, and she just expressed gratitude for the support that they get from the school system and the board. And then I'll call for liaison reports. Does anybody have a liaison report? I do. Yes, Dr. Gregor.
So I gave everybody a copy of the update, because there are a lot of dates on it, and there's links for more information. The Thank You Breakfast was June 11th, and my husband was actually super duper impressed because he didn't know the sort of amazing things that are funded with the mini-grants. I had some idea of the awesome projects, but he was blown away.
This is for the Milford Education Foundation, correct?
That's true.
Very good.
But that's a... I have to say that too. And so the upcoming mini-grant proposals will be in the fall for about $12,000. Then there's the charity auction coming up. The July 26 kickoff will be at the Milford Arts Council, at 40 Railroad Ave. Then the chairs will be on display around the community, and the website usually has a listing of where all the chairs will be, so you can check them all out. And then in August, at Costa Zorro, there is the auction of the chairs. And actually, when you purchase a ticket to the event, you actually get an entry into one of the raffles for a chair, and I included the link for that. Minds in Motion was a success this year, and there's a date set for next year's Minds in Motion, Minds in Motion, which is March 4, 2017. The Invention Convention was reported on last meeting, and so I just included the details there. And anybody who's interested, and anybody out there who's interested, there is a need for more volunteers, and so you can go to the Milford Education Foundation website to learn more about volunteering.
Very good. Do you remember what the total dollar amount was for the mini-grants this time?
No, but it was mentioned at the breakfast.
Okay.
It was an impressive amount.
Very good. Well, it says something here about $12,000. That's for next year.
The $12,000 is what the grants can be awarded up to.
Up to, okay.
A teacher could come up with a project that could be up to $12,000.
Or is that the total amount that they'll award?
That's the total amount. I think it's a limit of about 1,000 or 1,200, isn't it? About 500, excuse me. Okay. For grants.
I think so that's their budget for next year, so. All right, great. Yeah, the mini-grant program, it's really a nice program, and I'm appreciative to the foundation for carrying it on, the tradition. I think they, it was something that was stopped for a while and then started up again, so I think the teachers like it too. So thank you very much. You can express our gratitude to them next time you see them. Any other liaison reports? Mrs. Krasinski?
Permanent school building facilities, I think that's what it's called. Mrs. Bederico and I went last Wednesday night. East Shore unfortunately is still not complete. There's one outstanding item, and what has been decided is that the school system is going to take a credit from the contractor, and the school will complete that item. But until the credit is received, it is not complete, so hopefully at the July meeting, the job will be completed. West Shore Middle School is in the construction document phase, and on the 16th of June, there'll be a hearing at Inland Wetlands to hopefully get an answer on whether or not we can cross the wetlands for parking at West Shore, for an additional parking or not. And the architect is also asking the state for a code modification. Currently, it is, there is talk that the building code is going to change either September or October. The building has already been designed, so they're asking for a modification just for, to say that the building is designed to the code that, as it is, stands right now, the way it was designed. Probably shouldn't be a problem with getting that. And as of today, the abatement project at Jonathan Law started, as well as the schools for four elementary schools. And those are our seven projects.
Very good. Any other liaison reports? Mr. Drogba?
Madam Chair, the Milford Prevention Council last month reported a figure that's still hard for me to grasp. Mrs. Krasinski mentioned the Inland Wetlands Commission. I used to be on that commission, and it's just funny, because they had a give-back program of drugs, so they don't get flushed and they probably go into our ecosystem. They collected 400 pounds was the record. The new record this year is, and one day, Madam Chair, 700 pounds of drugs. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
These are prescription drugs.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. It's a nice...
700.
It's a good, ecologically, it's a good program. Any other liaison reports? I see none. We'll move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Fieser.
Thank you, Mrs. London. So the first item on the agenda is an update on where we are with the career pathways. And actually, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Burt, as he's really been taking the lead on this, and he's going to provide the update.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Give a few seconds for a couple handouts to come around. Give a few seconds for a couple handouts to come around. So what I'm providing you tonight is just an overview, an outline of the steps that have been put in place up to this point, as well as moving forward. The outline reviews both the first career pathway, our computer science pathway, as well as a potential second career pathway. So if everyone has a timeline in front of you, I'll just go through these step by step. My understanding, and I'm still getting information on this, that sometime ago, about two years ago, a long-range planning survey went out. As part of that survey, some interest questions were included, and we had over 2,000 responses to that. So we're going to be taking a look at that and trying to garner some data out of that in terms of the interest that came out of that survey. Recently, and as you know, this past fall, with the help of our science and business instructional supervisor, Justine LaSalle, that we have created the first computer pathway, which is the computer science pathway. That was approved through the budget process. We're now in the stages of implementation, as well as working this summer on the curriculum piece for that and any other additional training. And then, as you know, through the course of the winter, we had conversations about the second pathway. Original plans had the both pathways starting for this year. We realized that that was going to be a tremendous amount of work and we needed more input. The original plan was to have a community conversation as part of input from the community to help us determine that second pathway. Because of numerous reasons, primarily just because of lack of participation, we were unable to hold that first original date, which was supposed to be May 12th. We retooled it, we rethought it, we've changed the time. Originally, it was going to be a Thursday night. We're now going to be moving that to a Saturday morning. Hopefully, we can get some more additional participation from the community members, business members, entrepreneurs, et cetera, throughout the community, so we can get a good conversation, good input. One of the things that we are doing, you do have in your hand, one of the Save the Date cards. This is just going to be to all the identified folks. We're hoping to mail these out to over 100 people throughout the community, again, different leaders throughout the community, to try to get a good percentage of those folks for that date. Later in the summer, I'll be sending out a follow-up letter to give some more information, more details to what exactly we're asking for during this conversation. Also, recently, what we've done is last week, I'm sorry, last few weeks, before school, we did send out a survey to teachers, asking for what their thoughts were as part of this process. It was good feedback. We've got close to 100 responses to that in just a few days. There was a tremendous amount of interest. I can tell you the responses were varied, I mean, ranging, you name it, it was named. But there were a few themes, and I am compiling that data. And one of the next things we're going to be doing is trying to have a board workshop coming in July. And what I'll be doing in that workshop will be presenting all this information. Again, the data gathered from the long-range planning survey, the teacher survey, any other facts and information that we're able to provide, some of the current resources available to us in the school system, et cetera. So again, that's for a board workshop in July. We're potentially going to be doing that the same evening as the board meeting. As I mentioned before, through June and August, a number of our teachers that are participating in the computer science pathway in this coming fall are getting some additional training, as well as looking at some of our curriculum to ensure they're aligned to the expectations of that career pathway. As it says on the card here, the anticipated date for the second attempt of this conversation is August 27th. It's a Saturday, and we're going to do it in the morning. We're going to serve breakfast, so I hope that brings in some additional people, give them free breakfast. And again, it's going to be short. We're going to keep it to two hours max. The majority of that's going to be some organizational pieces. The actual conversation is going to be about an hour and a half. So we're hopeful that the timing, as well as the length of it, will attract folks to that information. Just so you know, just a reminder that we're actually implementing the second, the first career pathway in August, the first day of school is August 29th. Once we've had that community conversation, what we're going to do is bring the board back together in a workshop, and we're going to compile the information. We're hopeful that all of you can go and observe the conversation, but we're going to, you know, working with that different data that we get out of it, in addition to the July workshop. And then we're going to meet in September, the date is to be determined, to come together and try to determine some options, some viable options, to discuss what came out of all this conversation, as well as what we think is actually viable within the school system. So we're hopeful to get, complete that in September, come to a decision with the board, and then we can work on finalizing that through the budget process and through taking a look at our current processes to ensure that we can actually implement something. So again, by December, we're going to have that second pathway, hopefully in the budget process. Yes?
Mr. Burt, is it possible to, before the more selected group of community members conversation in August, to have sort of a more global survey to parents, like a link on the website where they can feed back into the process before you go through the smaller group to reach a bigger? I mean, I know that their parents were involved in the strategic planning process, but there might be new parents or new energy around it with the first pathway coming to fruition.
That is, that's an interesting idea. I wonder if we would narrow down the choices first before putting out to parents. Again, just from my experience, we're putting out to teachers sort of as a, you know, wide open, so we got back, literally, the range was tremendous on anything you can imagine, the pathway. So I'm wondering if we narrow it, focus down a little bit, maybe get more impact, either from the July workshop with the board and then the August date, maybe before our September workshop to have more of that input. We're also looking into student interest as well, before then. Again, narrowing it down because we know that if we create those open-ended questions, we'll get back, you know, you know, Space Ranger to Ninjas, you know. My two career choices. So again, and then the idea is that we're going to take the time after the budget's approved, go through the pathway development, and then obviously for implementation for the 2017-18 school year.
Just to piggyback what Dr. Gregory just commented on, I think there was an expectation of the board that there would be some kind of participation from other stakeholders, parents, et cetera. So, and I think we had talked about the potential of some kind of a survey. So I'll leave it to you to decide when and how that would work best, but I do think there was that original conversation about doing that.
And we're ensuring that we're having parent voices in the community conversation in August as well.
Oh, okay. Good, very good.
Obviously, not the same amount as a survey.
Yes, right.
I knew what you were thinking.
Any questions for Mr. Burt on this?
So how many, how many folks received this card? How many are being invited to the community conversation?
Right now, we're up to, I want to say, close to 100 names. And the goal is, is working with, you know, working with the folks who know the town, that's not me, and all the parties that are in the town, to try to get up to close to 200 names. You know, if you put out a date, if we get a fourth of that, that would be ideal, somewhere between 40 and 50 people would be an ideal conversation. You get more of a critical mass there. If you're under 20, it's going to be very limited. So that is, that is our hope.
If someone's watching, could they email you to get on the list?
Of course.
We should also add that the, obviously, the folks who have received the initial invitation would get the hold of the date. Any new person that's on the list, there's a letter that's, there's the Save the Date so they could put that up on their refrigerator, but there's a letter that explains what we're asking people, what we're inviting them to. We actually also thought of putting in the brochure from the computer science pathway so they have an understanding of this was the first pathway that was selected, and, you know, how there's a desire to select a second one. So people will have a context for what it is that we're inviting them to.
I would just agree with the other comments, that it would be great to have more, a more global survey, hearing parent feedback before the board, sometime before the board makes a final decision. And I don't know if it would also make sense to have a link for a community survey for folks who are not parents, who are not invited to the community conversation, but may want to have an opportunity to weigh in. And I say that because I know when we did the long-range planning surveys, I think there was some feedback or some comments made, this goes back a while, but there were some comments made about the broader community at large not being involved in the conversation.
Actually, that survey, just as a clarification, was out for the whole community.
Right, it was.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That was, that was put out to the entire community.
I think what I heard was maybe people didn't know where to find it or how to get to it. I'm not sure, it was so long ago.
It was, but it was pretty clear, it was on the website. And it was pretty, you know, but I just, so I just want you to know that.
Right.
Mr. Krasinski?
Did your initial contact with the people for the June conversation, was there a request to respond? Are you coming or not coming?
Yes.
Okay. And what kind of response did you get?
Again, the original list was very limited, which was one of the concerns. We were, I would take responsibility for that, that it took us some time to get the date organized with the district and the city calendar, getting lists together and getting the information out to folks. We had a very low response, under 20 people, which would not have been a good conversation. So that's why.
And how many went out? How many invitations went out?
I believe it was 40, so it was very limited.
And was there any contact besides mail?
Primarily, we did mail contacts.
Because, you know, actually, to get 20 positive with 40 invitations with just mail contact is actually fantastic. I mean, mail contacts have very low response rates, in 2% to 4%, so that was actually pretty good.
We were contacted by, I would say, I don't want to say several in the sense of, you know, it wasn't 20 people, but
Right.
I was contacted, I don't know if you were, by, I would say, maybe five individuals who felt very badly at not being able to come, who indicated, please, if you're going to reschedule this, I very much would like to be a part of this. One organization said, this is the person you really should be sending this to? Because again, you know, we don't know sometimes in businesses, you know, does the CEO, whoever it may be, is this the name change, or, you know, like who to give it to, et cetera? You know, one person, you know, emailed and actually had a dialogue, and when I said that we were actually thinking of moving it to a Saturday and a Saturday morning, applauded that. So at least, from my perspective, I felt like, oh, okay, people read this, some people read this and saw, got the merit of it. We also heard the timing. It was May, it's, you know, the end of the year, there were so many conflicts that were occurring, I think, for different individuals. And that was just, you know, short-sighted on our part in as far as scheduling it then.
Mr. Whiskeman?
If I recall correctly, one of the, not the sole, but one of the objectives of having a career pathways was to provide an opportunity for students to taste and prepare themselves for opportunities in the community, from an employment standpoint, from a career standpoint. And that one of the reasons we're getting some of the input was to tap into some of the industries, the businesses, and those who do hiring in particular, to ask them, you know, what kind of education, training, and experiences are they looking for to help shape these career pathways so that they're very, much more focused on some practical aspects of education and training. And to that end, I think that I want to encourage you to continue your focus on those individuals who are most likely to provide that kind of input. While it may be interesting to get a full community perspective, if you get a very broad-based, you know, everybody has a different interest kind of a thing, this may dissipate your focus on the objective of trying to find career pathways which bring the student and the business communities together. So in that respect, I think that you're on the right path and the direction that you're heading at this time.
So just to clarify, this is a Save the Date card that's going to go out shortly, and then there'll be a follow-up letter that will go out to all of these same people later in the summer with some more specific details and RSVP and that kind of thing.
Dr. Pfeizer clarified it for me. Everybody knew we were getting the full package of the card, the current pathway, and the introductory letter. The folks who are on the previous list will get the Save the Date card. And I'll follow up with everyone later in August, just some details.
I would suggest that even those people that already got the card get some kind of a follow-up, so that, because getting a card now, I know in my perspective, it sits on, goes into a pile.
Yeah, late July, mid-August, we're going to do, the more communication, the better.
Yes, there you go. Any other questions for Mr. Burt?
The next item on the agenda is the UConn Early College Experience. If you remember, this was a topic that was, the board had many questions about that emerged when the board took up the policy around attendance areas and the concern of, is there equity between the two high schools? So we indicated that we were going to follow up and do some research around this, particularly in relation to law, high school, and, you know, what steps might be able to be taken to ensure greater equity across the two schools. So with that, again, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Burt. I know that he and Mr. Thompson, who is here, have some very specific information to share.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to congratulate Mr. Thompson and the staff at law. They've done a tremendous amount of work. As soon as they've taken up the call for this, they've done a tremendous amount of work, contacting the ECE program at UConn, meeting with the staff, talking with their teachers, reviewing their paperwork, reviewing staff files, et cetera. So they really have taken this on with the vengeance, and I really appreciate them taking that on. Just to give you a timeline, since we've had that conversation, and it really arose out of that, that, out of district attendance policy, we've taken a hard look at this and how are we going to attempt to create equity between the two buildings? Again, I want to preface this by saying there's no guarantees. As you know, that there's an application process for you to be a teacher in the ECE program, and each department has its own requirements. In other words, the history department might have different requirements than the chemistry department at UConn. They are the ones who are responsible for providing the ECE certification, if you will, for the teachers. We only can provide the support to the staff for the application and to encourage them to apply, but really, the ultimate decision is up to UConn. I'll let Mr. Thompson speak about how the meeting went. The director of the ECE program, Brian Pochere, came down and actually met with the staff at law back in early May, and my understanding from Mr. Thompson is that that was an excellent meeting. I was unable to attend that meeting because of the conflict, but I did have a follow-up call. And I can say that Brian is very excited to establish a relationship with our other high school. He was very positive, he was very hopeful. He, again, was cautious, it does have to go through the application process, but that we are looking to review that process and the applications for your information. I know we were pressed to try to get something in place for the 2016-17 school year. The applications were due in late 2015, around December. So we are far past that date, and we are looking for that target date for this December 2016 to make sure that we have the appropriate staff applying for those positions. The implementation would be for 2017-18. So we are, again, encouraging those teachers, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Thompson to give us a little bit more detail about the potential courses that are available. Again, I'm going to caution you again, it's all based on the application process. And any other details you might want to share from your meeting?
Sure. And I, on behalf of the law staff, would like to thank Mr. Burt. When he said, allowed the building folks for us to research this, we were thrilled because there is a need at Jonathan Law, the parents, the kids. 25 of our seniors are going to UConn this year. So while those, you know, certainly those ECE credits are transferable elsewhere, I mean, that's the home base. So it's, you know, that's a primary school for us, so we're grateful for this opportunity. We took it on about, I think it was April 11th, and we were afforded the opportunity to do some research, which we did. We went and did some, talked to some contacts around the
we did. We went and did some, talked to some contacts around the state who are part of the ECE consortium. We also had a meeting with our friends over at Walton, the dean of academics over there, they do, they have a number of ECE courses as well as AP courses. So we wanted, we don't want to do anything to impede our AP courses, because they are not only so important, they continue to grow, so, at our school. So we don't want to, we don't want to minimize those at all. What we want to try to do is figure out a way to complement that emerge, the ECE courses as well. So in May, we met with the folks at Walton, and then as Mr. Burt said, May 9th, we met with the director of the Early College Experience program from UConn. Brian was great. He came down with his associate and met with my assistant principal, Mrs. Drew, and me, and we talked to him extensively about some of the things that Mr. Burt talked about, the, you literally have to apply to be a UConn adjunct professor. So you have to do the resume, you have to do the letters of recommendation, you have to do the application, the whole bit. Each department has very different criteria. It is not uniform. I know we talk about uniform here a lot, but it's very different. So what we did was, we talked, we looked primarily, Mrs. Capazno was great in helping us look at the staff, the existing staff that we had and their degrees, because that's part of the process. And then we approached the teachers at law who were thrilled to explore this to a person. And then we met with Brian from ECE, and we talked about these opportunities. Based on that conversation, we then reached out again to the, the identified disciplines. It's possible everywhere, from music to chemistry to social studies, US history, post-1877, which I guess is a thing, and, I'm sorry, it was World War, Civil War, but it's 1877, if you're wondering, to, to English courses and to a Spanish course. So we've identified right now, environmental science, six targeted courses for ECE at Jonathan Law, right now, as it is. And so the process now is the, those teachers that we, that are currently teaching these classes, we've talked to them, they're looking at, they have to create a syllabus for each course. They're researching that right now. We've paired them up with different folks from area schools, whether it's Walton or Amity or Foreign or Daniel Hind, all around, who had the Early College Experience program and said, share syllabus, talk about, you know, the different nuances that go into the application process. And also, for those courses, because there is a reality, each course will, you know, require a teacher to teach a section, so that's an FTE allocation, where are there successful overlap with the AP courses, which have a different set of standards and applications in the process and all that. So we're looking at all that right now. So late August, we're going to start the application process. We're going to meet again with Brian from UConn, and each teacher is going to submit a application, the resume, apply as an adjunct for, for the following school year. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We're just thrilled. We're thrilled at the opportunity. And, you know, it looks like we're really going to, we're going to be able to make this happen.
How do the ECE courses compare to the AP courses?
Mr. Jagdusinski, that's a little bit of a loaded question, because there are some folks who would say they're, they're really different. I don't necessarily think that's true based on what I've researched and heard. They can complement each other, but there are some differences. So for example, a US history class, many schools teach the AP US history and the ECE US post-1877 together, because there's a lot of overlap. Chemistry is a whole different animal. The rigidity, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but the rigidity of the UConn ECE chemistry, expectations, syllabus, exam, the whole bit, is very different. Now, that said, if you take an ECE chem class, you could come away with eight credits because of the lab and, you know, so I get it, you know, but, but we're looking at that. The ECE Spanish, that can really fit into our course progression and complement the kids who are passionate about the Spanish, you know, the language. And then, so I might be able to get a kid an ECE credit and an AP credit. So that's the, those are the kind of details that we're working on to see how we can staff that and how we can make that work.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Yes. You probably, at some point along the way, will find some staff members who either get turned down or don't quite make it because they're just short of the qualifications. They need one extra class, or they need one extra qualification. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to provide the extra support for those teachers who are desiring to do this and who are in need of a little extra support, perhaps some extra course or two that they would have to take to bring their qualifications up to the standards that UConn would require. So I think that when you run across staff in that kind of a position, we should certainly do everything we can to support their efforts to be part of this, this group. It would serve us, and it would, it would be good for the staff and everything, everybody along those lines. You know, it might be just professional development, but it might be some formal coursework they would need to take or an extra couple of credits if, if they're, you know, along that pathway for themselves. And who knows? An adjunct professor at UConn serving here may decide to go on to become a full-time college professor somewhere. You never can tell.
Mr. Kraszewski?
So the application has to be due by the end of the calendar year. Do you have any idea of when you would find out if these teachers or classes would be accepted?
Yes, it's usually, according to Brian, at UConn, the ECE director, it's about a three-week turnaround. They, their department chairs review that, and their deans, et cetera. So we would know fairly, fairly quickly. So that should flow nicely into, based on the timeline that Mr. Burt has set, for us to meet, catch the dovetail into program studies, budget season, et cetera. So to your point, Mr. Whiskeman. So hopefully, that all comes together right about the same time.
Okay. Is, the applications have to be in by the end of 2016, but can they go in earlier?
Yes.
And then if they go in earlier, we find out earlier? So it's three, the turnaround starts when you actually submit it? It's not like it sits there until the end of the year, and then they look at all of them together?
I don't think so. That's not the impression I got, but also, the department meets when the department meets, and they have their own.
Right. Okay. Mrs. Federico?
Thank you. I lost my question.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did you get any information from them about how, how frequently the credits are accepted by schools other than UConn?
Well, no.
Okay.
But he is a, one of his jobs is to sell, and he does a nice job with that, too. If you are going to a state school, it's generally accepted, certainly at UConn. And you're going to get a, if I'm a student and I take one of these courses, I actually get a transcript from UConn.
Right.
So, so the likelihood of that being accepted elsewhere is pretty good, especially, you know, in the Northeast, et cetera. If I, if I get a four or five in an AP class, the likelihood of being accepted in many of the schools our kids go to is pretty good.
So my original conversation and some research is that on their own website, they said about 80% of surveyed schools. Further research, they, they had a very select survey, so I'm not quite sure and confident of that number. I do know that if you compare the two, once you get outside of New England, you compare the AP credit, which is a worldwide program versus the UConn ECE program, that perhaps there's less, you know, understanding of that as you get further away. Other, other states have ECE programs, you know, with their local universities, and so that they know how that works. And so they may, may or may not take that credit. Most likely, public institutions more over than private institutions.
Okay. And for that reason, I think it's important, after hearing our valedictorian and salutatorian resumes, the number of AP credits that they took and the schools they're going to, you know, some very prestigious universities, I think it's, I take stock in your comment that you don't want to supersede the AP, you don't want to impede the progress of AP, and you're very mindful of that, and I think that's important for that purpose.
Please understand, without sliding the ECE, I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's very important. I think our, I know our parents are very excited about bringing it to Jonathan Law. So my, my, my goal is to figure out how they can complement each other.
Good. I appreciate that. Just Dr. Gregory?
Perfect segue. I imagine that ECE courses come with pretty heavy textbook investments when they're starting up. And so I'm wondering if there are opportunities for capturing some of the excitement around bringing ECE to law, to have fundraisers, to emphasize the impact on the future budget when it comes to implementing multiple courses in the same year? Just something to be thinking about.
I can just say that in my, one of my previous roles, we had ECE courses in our social studies department. We were able to use our own textbooks. But again, the requirements are going to be different by department. So we, we'll take a hard look at that and what the actual budget implication might be. I'm, I'm cautious about getting students to fundraise for textbooks. If there's a way that we can do it, I'd rather, I'd rather do that through a local budget than, than have students pay for textbooks. Your thoughts on that? But we'll, we'll find a way to make it happen. So we have equity between the two programs.
Mr. Kraszewski?
Comment to Dr. Gregory. We have currently five ECE courses at one. Some of these may be the same courses and could be similar, the same books or, maybe, we'll see.
I could take one moment to just, again, throw out a word of caution, and Mr. Thompson did an excellent job of posing this. And chemistry, for instance, the UConn chemistry curriculum is not aligned to the new national science standards. We know that the AP, the college board, is moving towards Common Core and towards the new national standards, both the new science and social studies standards. So there's a little bit of conflict there. Do you, you know, you couldn't teach an AP chem and an ECE chem at the same time. So as Mr. Thompson said, we'd have to take a look at that in terms of staffing, in terms of enrollment, you know, would we, in some cases, do you flip-flop the ears in terms of offering? So there's a lot of different, it's not just as simple as, oh, great, we have an ECE course. We're going to have to take a hard look at this. I also want to put in a plug that as, you know, as the, as you can see, Mr. Thompson's staff is very passionate about this. We want to ensure that we have the same level. And I know that Max over at Foreign is in the same, same condition. He really is interested in taking a look at all of his staff to ensure that we're providing as many ECE courses as possible. You know, as Fran said, 20 or 25, did you say, UConn students this year?
25.
25. So it's an incredible opportunity. We want to make sure that we ensure that in both buildings.
Any other questions? Mr. De Grego?
Yeah, Mr. Burtz and Mr. Thompson. Henry Ford said, obstacles are what you see when you take your eye off the prize or the goal. To Mr. Burtz, I want to thank you for coming here with a can-do attitude that you have, because I don't think this will fail with your attitude and Mr. Burt's direction. It's a win-win. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Burtz.
No pressure. Thank you.
Any questions? Federico?
Thank you. I just want to offer one piece of additional information. As, as you know, my son is a student at the Bridgeport Aquaculture School, and I believe they have an AP chemistry class that is an ECE course. So I don't know how they do it, but that may be another resource for you to contact to find out how they got the two programs to work together.
I think it's, and I appreciate that. Thank you. We will definitely look into that. My AP chemistry teacher is, obsessed sounds creepy, but she's really focused on trying to make this work. And I think to Mr. Burt's point, it is getting harder and harder because the standards are a little bit different. But if there is a will, to Mr. De Gregor's point, there's a way.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not saying that, you know, to discredit what you're saying. I believe you that it's difficult. Somehow, they've done it. Maybe they've done it based on old standards, but it might be another place you can reach out to.
I, just a little off the subject, but I had a question on the AP courses. The students get a grade from the teacher, and that's what goes into their grading.
Transcript.
And then they also take the AP course. Have we ever looked at how closely aligned our grades are with whether or not students actually pass or, you know, do well with the AP course?
Yes, sir. All the time. And then there's a disparity. A while back, I had a very beloved teacher who took AP on, and that teacher, the students got, all got As, and all got Ones on the exam, and no longer teach AP. So yes, remind that, very well. I would say there's a consistency rate, at least at law, in the high 80s in terms of the correlation of grades and numbers. But remember, the difference between a, in AP, and not to get to the minutia of it, but the difference between like a two and a three in an AP English class isn't, isn't as stark as the difference between being a C. You know what I mean? So, but, but we'll look at all of that. And I meet quarterly with all of the AP teachers to look at, report our grades, projections, a little bit, because that, that's a, that's a huge role this for our school.
Mr. Kraszewski?
I just want to thank you for updating us on this, because I've had a lot of parents since we had that, since this has come up, contact me and want to know what's going on, and if we knew we were going to have these classes, or if anybody was looking into it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. Look forward to more information as it comes up.
So, so the next thing really is just, just a preliminary, and I want to underscore preliminary, or as Kathy Vanetti, who really put this together, says, a sneak peek at a review that's really going to have much, much more into it. I started to do this a year ago, and, and we got such positive feedback when it went up on the website, I mean, from family members and community members, et cetera, because it was just a quick way to kind of see a number of the highlights from the school, the school system. The difficulty this year is, is once again, I mean, the year ended, and here we are at the board meeting, and it just is like, we just sort of like ran out of time, because a lot of the pictures and things come in from the schools and then sort of sorting them, et cetera. So, so I'm just qualifying that this is certainly not comprehensive. It's going to be added to, and there will be other pieces that will be developed. But it's a, it's a great start. And again, I want to pay tribute to Kathy Vanetti, because this is really her project. So, here we go. I'm not going to, whoops, I'm not going to speak to each of these. I'll let you read some of them, just to tell the story itself. This goes back to last summer. There we go. This is curriculum work, so groups of teachers working, again, last summer. We had 50 new teachers come in, which was a lot. That was one of our biggest numbers in a while. These were our demographics at the start of the year, 195 preschoolers, and you can see the elementary, middle, and high school. So just some sampling. So there's one of our smart boards that is being used in the classroom, and then, of course, this was Matheson, I think it was, that did the time capsule, and the kids had done all kinds of history, and, you know, what would they want to have people see from Matheson 50 years from now, et cetera. Of course, I can't read. Oh, the authors, this was on Skype, I think. There was two examples this year. Oh, the authors, this was on Skype, I think, there was two examples this year of authors that actually Skyped with students, this was middle school, it was also done in third grade, the author of Wilma Unlimited. And then on the right, one of the guests who came in, this is for the entrepreneurship class, I believe in the middle school. I think that's, who has read, maybe Westhor, maybe? So this is just to give you an idea of how many courses we have, but you know, if people are wondering about the high school and can you get an education at the high school, well, you have 184 choices, and you can see on the right there the number of categories of classes, and on the left. We introduced 10 new courses this year, some of these you're already familiar with, with the Model UN and AP Human Geography, Digital Drawing, et cetera. In fact, one of the students that we selected their piece tonight was in Advanced Photography, so these are new courses. The elementary was the departmentalization, and then of course, our preschool was decentralized. These were, again, this is 2000, the class of 2015, we don't have the data, obviously, on 216, but 68 AP scholars, 25 with honor, 28 with distinction, and then eight National AP scholars. You notice that the average score for them is four or better on all of the exams that they take. This is an example of one of the art displays, district-wide art displays, which is fabulous. Nutcracker Ballet is one of the things that, one of the grade levels in elementary, I forget which one it is, attends every year, and then of course, here's our students rehearsing for the district-wide string concert. We have so many kids in strings now that trying to get them all on stage, fourth and fifth graders, is a huge challenge. So, School Gate Guardian, which at the beginning of the year, you may have remembered, there were lots of reservations on the part of parents and the community, et cetera, about how this was going to work. It's in, 100%, it's in, and those of you, you know when you go into the school, you know, and then the greeters that are in every one of the elementary and middle schools, so that people, there is somebody there at the door to sign them in, et cetera. I think I may have mentioned this before, we engaged with, actually, this is a whole state initiative, it was a tabletop exercise, and for us, it was a, it was a hurricane, I don't remember, but it was weather-related, that hit near Ford High School, and all the roads were shut down, electricity was lost, et cetera, and then of course, trying to go through step by step. And then also, we did, a number of us, including the police, fire department, other emergency folks, with a number of our own staff, attended an online seminar that was created from the superintendent in Fairfield Public Schools, because if you remember what happened last fall in Fairfield, when they had to go into lockdown, all 17 of their schools, et cetera. A number of us were trained in, or certified on the use of the AED, and also, we received training, a number of us, in CPR. I have to wait for a second, I see myself. Communication, we, there's some, just some small changes, but like, for example, the upcoming events piece that was created on the website was, I would say, the number one, you know, home run this year. Again, this was Kathy Benetti, and it's astounding, you know, how quick it is now, people can just go on there to find what are the events of the week, or the month, or et cetera. These are partnerships, so J. Rowe, this was last year, so he is over, yeah, okay, so that was 63,000, so he's over 70,000, absolutely. This was Milford Hospital Auxiliary, which every year presents to us, you notice one of your board members is in that picture, Mr. Whiskeman, and they, this was to purchase special ed equipment to students requiring assistance with speech and language. These are partnerships, these are actually grants. One for Live Oaks actually came in earlier in the year, this was on their Student Leadership Program, and then the one on the left for Ford High is actually what they're going to do with their freshman transition program beginning next year. Another partnership with the Kiwanis Club, which purchased, I think, two additional AEDs, didn't they? Trying to remember, but anyways, and they are committed to getting more AEDs, particularly in this building. United Way, almost $40,000, the school staff and students raised. Service to Others, these are, I mean, we could put 100 pictures up here in terms of Veterans Day, but oh my gosh, do the schools take this seriously, and they really love it, and the veterans do as well. This is one of our custodians, this is at JFK, flip that back, will you, Ken? On the right, Bill Case, who's actually was the, he was in charge of the Veterans Day Parade for years and years, but anyways, he is the custodian over at JFK, so you see him there. A sampling, so here's one of the food, and there's many food drives in so many of the schools, but on the left, this was JFK, blood drive that the academy held. So these were special events, this was a visit by Chris Murphy, and so we were asked to have high school students join him, and so these are some of our finest young men and women from Ford and Law. And this was when Representative Rosa Delora came and did a lesson, this was around healthy eating and taking care of one's body, et cetera. Mayor Blake, this was Key Club Week. Small city with a big heart, all of you being sworn in at the inauguration, and the little ones singing, if you remember. Well, that one I didn't ask to be put in. Anyways, keep going. This is the end of the year celebration, these are the Teacher of the Year parent and Para of the Year, as well as the Michael Cummings Award recipient, and so I always go to their schools, and they don't, have no idea that we're coming, and I bring a, well, with Dave Fishman, I didn't bring a bouquet of flowers, but we brought him a funzi plant, I think it was, to give to him, but that's who, the pictures that we, you know, either took them outside or someplace where it would be a decent background, but they're, all of them, just really thrilled, which is really nice. Your work, and this is just a sampling, but of which you should really feel proud, I believe, the redistricting and the budget, and the goals, which we are so excited about, policy work that's been, that was done this year, the tours, which haven't been done, that's only the second time in my six years the board members have gone on tour. And then of course, the district before and after school program, I was at the funeral this morning, sadly, for Gary Johnson's son, I saw Charlie Clifford, those of you who know Charlie, who was the director of the YMCA here, and I said to him, Charlie, are you aware of the fact that we've moved to the point of where the Y has taken over all of the programs? And he just had this huge smile, he said, Betty, it happened? I said, it did, Charlie, and I said, and it's yours and Jim's work primarily, and then the collaboration of the staff, et cetera, and I said, it's a goal. I mean, he was just absolutely thrilled, he didn't, had no idea, if you remember, he's now in Rhode Island, so he wasn't aware of what had occurred since he left, so it was very, very nice to be able to share that. So again, this was just a taste, as you can say, sneak peek, it's going to, there's going to be much, much more, and we certainly will give you copies, you know, and more will be added, and we'll be adding data, so for example, when, you know, some of our AP data comes in, we'll be able to incorporate that, if we ever get data from the state, we could incorporate some of that. Some of, certainly our college, when we get an idea for sure of where kids are going to college, do we have to put those in? We have the acceptances, we haven't, the high schools are still working on definitively where our kid's going, and so that information will go in, and a lot more, even in those categories, so, but it's just a sense of some of it, and I think it's been a really good year overall, I think you should feel really proud as board, as to what's been achieved and to be continued. And these are teachers' ads.
Not a side.
It was on the last day with the kids.
Yep. They're not excited.
I was hoping that was the first day out.
It was.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
And the next item is the end of your transfers, which we would like to have voted on this evening, and Mr. De Grego, do you want to take the lead on that?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Feazer, and Mrs. Glenn, and members of the board. It's fairly short, I think, I provided you with the information on what dollars we need to transfer at this point in the year. I'm pleased to report to you that we will end the fiscal year, in the school year, in black. And now, as we've been telling you at the quarterly reports, and with the memo that was provided to you in the board package on May 25th, we have to make minor adjustments in the budget in order for us to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish at the end of the year. And so, just going through each of the items very quickly, as I said, I've provided with an explanation, but I certainly can elaborate. In teacher salaries, we're requesting to transfer $120,000. Those of you who have, this was a board question at budget time, the past two years, that number for teacher salaries has been much larger, and we've explained to the boards that there were two anomaly years where we had, this account is largely driven by teacher retirements, and two years ago, we had many more teacher retirements than we normally budgeted for, which then accounts for a higher amount of turnover savings the following year, and then the following year, just the opposite happened, we had fewer, many, much fewer retirements than we normally have for teachers. We budget for the average, which is 18, and in one year, we had, I believe, 28, and the following year, we had eight, but the average over the two years was the 18, and now we're back at where we really should be. And so that number is much lower than it has been over the past two years, as we told you that it would be. Teacher substitutes, we're very happy about this number. As we told you at budget time, and part of the whole budget package was to sustain and strengthen what the, you know, what the board has allowed us to do with the funds that you've provided, or the city has provided, and you've allocated over the past two years. And with, over the past few years, with so much in the changes in curriculum, the changes associated with Common Core, and the professional development that went along with that, many times, teachers were pulled out of their classrooms to work on curriculum work, or to do professional development, and there was a concerted effort, Mr. Berger, Dr. Feazer can elaborate a little bit, but we pulled teachers out much less this year than we have in the past, and you can see the savings associated with that, and we believe that we'll be able to continue that in the 16, 17 budget. As we've reported to you, gasoline and diesel, we'll have a substantial savings there, and we also, a small savings in the telephone account. We completed this year the conversion to a voice-over-IP phone system. The last two things that we had to do were the two high schools, which is by far the largest piece of the system, but we completed that last year, and so we're seeing a benefit in that, a small benefit, but a benefit just the same in reduced telephone costs. So that's where we're asking, we're a total of $415,000 to be transferred from those accounts, and it will go into, as we reported, the natural gas. At the halfway point, and also at the third quarter, or at the halfway point, we were projecting this number to be about $84,000, $85,000. And then at the quarterly report in April, we told you because of the mild winter that we had had, and less consumption that we had used, that that number would be smaller, and so we're projecting that when all the bills are finally paid, we'll only be a $40,000 deficit. We don't like to have deficits at all, but we've explained this to you ad nauseam about the calculation error that was made. And so, we were aided, though, by the good winter, which is a good one. And then, we're proposing to transfer the bulk of the money into buildings and grounds projects. As we tell you each year, if there's money left over at the year, there are multitudes of buildings and grounds projects that never make it into the budget, very needed projects, things that eventually will need to get done, but we can't do everything every year, and so, you know, there are things that fall off the project list and the final amount that gets into the budget, but if we do have savings at the end of the year, we ask that you allow us to transfer them into these buildings and grounds projects, and they were identified for you in the memo that Dr. Feazer included in the May 27 board update. So those are some of the things, as I've said in the memo over and over again, probably three or four times in the memo, there's far more dollars that could be spent if we had them, but this will help, and we'll be able to do some of the things on that list that we otherwise would not be able to do. So again, we're asking to transfer $415,000 from those accounts into the ones listed on the transfer. There may be a minor, a minor transfer that comes to you in July, that's after everything is closed and all the bills are paid, we come to you with a final transfer, but this will be the bulk of it. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Mr. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So how do these changes impact the 2016, 2017 budget?
They really don't.
Okay.
Because we're asking to spend them either in a category that we have to close the gap on, natural gas, or we're asking to put those into projects that are not included in the 15, 16, or 16, 17 budget.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, let me reclarify my question. So some of these changes are because the account turned out to be less or more than we expected?
Correct.
Right? But we made certain assumptions when we prepared the 2016, 17 budget based on these numbers?
Well, based on...
Or what did we already know, I guess? For example, the substitutes.
So there's no increase, I went and looked, there's no increase in the 16, 17 budget for substitutes from the 15, 16?
Right, but we came in $200,000 lower.
Right.
Was the budget based on the original higher number?
When we came in, the budget that we put together in December, brought to you in January, we didn't know yet that we would be able to achieve this savings.
Right.
And so, we knew that we were going to make an effort to achieve the savings, but we didn't know, so we asked you for exactly what we had budgeted in 15, 16. We're hoping that in 16, 17, we'll be able to sustain this reduced number, which would mean a surplus in next year's budget, but I think it's just too early to tell.
Right.
We're very pleased that we've been able to save this much, and, but can we sustain that for another year? We think so, but we'll see.
Okay. Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Any other questions? I see none. Motion?
I agree. I make a motion that the Board of Education approves the administration's recommended 2015, 2016 budget transfers.
Second. Mr. Federico has seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? I see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The last report this evening is our Human Resources Report, which I know Mrs. Capasna will elaborate on.
Okay, thank you. You have for the month, the current listing of job postings, as well as all the personnel changes for the month, as well as a stipend appointment list, which kind of continues into a long report for our paras, so I did want to explain that. In the paraprofessional parent educator contract, there is a stipulation that if a para has, is required to have special training for their assignment, or who is required to toilet, or if they're a job coach, you know, that there's a certain amount of money that they get just once a year, and we do this at the end of each year, so we try to give you the list each year, and you can see, there's quite a number of people. I did want to mention what some of this... I did want to mention what some of this stands for. I mean, you might know PMT, Physical Management Training. ADL, I didn't know what that stands for, but it's basically a life skills training program that helps paras with uplifting and toileting students from kindergarten all the way through high school. And then ADA is Applied Behavioral Analysis. So you can see that we have obviously quite a number of our paras, our specialty-trained, and either get, there's varying degrees of money. It's usually, it's $400 and $350. If there's something other than that, it's maybe that it was prorated, they came in mid-year with a new student, or something like that. I also wanted to mention, we Retirementwise, Jim said 18 per year is average, and right now, we're up to 17, so that's, and we may get more. I know the last day school was just on Friday, but we have 14 teachers who retired effective the end of the year, and then we had the three mid-year retirements, as we've been reporting. I'd also like to report that we have 10 teacher resignations, which does happen this time of year as well, for new jobs and relocation out of state. And we also have six new teacher hires so far. I don't expect 50 to 60 like we had last year. That, that 50 number was just the number that came to the New Teacher Institute, but we hired a lot of people after that as well. But we have six new teacher hires this year, three science teachers, two world language teachers, one Spanish and one Latin, actually, and also a library media specialist. So our hiring season is upon us, and so far, so good.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Jagzinski?
What is our turnover rate?
I don't know that we actually have analyzed the percentage, the turnover rate, but it's average typical of school systems in Connecticut. It's nothing really higher or lower.
I mean, I think that that would be, it would be of interest to me.
Yeah, okay. Let's see what we can do there.
And, you know, overall turnover, and then for teachers, what the turnover rate is.
Any other questions? Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the job postings, there's quite a few teacher leaders, team leaders. Are those just standard postings that have, they have to fly every year?
Yes, because there are some of our stipend in positions for our current teachers, and every year they have to be reappointed.
Okay. Any other questions? I wanted to ask what the, is, is there posting for an assistant band director at Jonathan Law? Is that, have we always had an assistant band director there?
A couple of years ago, that was a new stipended position, and the person who's currently doing it decided that next year...
Oh, is that the person who does the margin band?
Yes.
Versus the, and what's the difference between a reading teacher and a reading interventionist?
Well, let's see, there's different certifications in reading. Reading interventionist would be a 102, which is a special education. People at the lowest level coming in to intervene and correct. And a reading, let's see, a reading consultant, I forget the number on that one, and then there's like two or three different reading endorsements. So it really depends on the population that they're dealing with, as well as whether they're dealing with students, or whether they're dealing with staff, teachers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. I don't have any other reports. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fieser. Then moving on to consent agenda, Ms. Vice, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items, disbursement report, and the May 9, 2016 business meeting minutes, May 23, 2016 Committee of the Home meeting minutes, May 23, 2016 Board Grievance Orientation Minutes, and May 31, 2016 Board Grievance Minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, there was no new business. We move on to board comment. Any board comment tonight? Yes, Mrs., Dr. Federico, sorry.
I would like to ask that in the future, when we have surplus fees in budgeting, that we consider transferring some of those to enriching the professional development budget? Not all, certainly, but like a portion going to professional development, or some sort of enrichment for the faculty and students who are working hard to not need the substitute teachers and stuff, where you have, find the savings? That a small portion of that goes back into that to sort of positively reinforce those activities?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Jagzinski?
Yeah, I don't know if we've given any thought to how to notify parents that if their children are not eligible for busing, they do have an option to request busing. Last year, when this was brought up, the comment was made that it was just a link on the website, which I didn't think was a very much, you know, positive approach to that. I'm hoping we could be, take a more positive position this year.
We can do that, and what we plan to do, as we did last year, but we plan to do it again this year, is to, when parents go on and sign off that they've read the handbooks and things, then they get their teacher assignments, they'll also get their busing assignment at that time. So we can put a notice link to that, because those who will be eligible for the bus will be able to go on and check what bus they have, and those that do not have a bus will be able to put some type of a notice that, that they can take advantage of the...
Opt-in.
Right, yes, yes, yes. We can do that.
Okay. Any other comments? Mrs. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Richatelli, since you brought that up, I just want to make a comment on that process. As a parent, having gone through that process before, I understand what I'm required to do is go on the website, acknowledge that I've received the handbook, and then find out who my child's teacher is. I, I believe many parents skim through, say, okay, I acknowledge, and then go find out who my child's teacher is. I wonder if there's a way to let the parents acknowledge that they've read the handbook earlier, a day or two beforehand, and then they can get straight to the teacher. When the, when the time comes, they may spend a little more time on it. Just, just a thought that I wanted to put out there as a parent, based on my own experience.
Yeah, we can talk to the IT folks. This is really one of those areas that I've been all that much involved in.
Yeah, and I only mention it because you've mentioned that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the way that, since there is an acceptable use policy now, and, and everything is done electronically, it's, it's the way to get parents to actually do it, because if they didn't have to do it in order to get their teacher assignments, many, many of them might not do it. They don't say won't do it.
And I think many parents start checking a few days before, and if they could get that piece out of the way, they might, like I said, they might spend a little more time on it.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to the IT folks about that. Sure.
Mr. DeGriggo?
Madam Chair, a couple of weeks ago, I attended a West Shore School. Mr. Ackreed had a fundraiser for veterans, and it was another sellout crowd. I went two years in a row, and as a, as an Air Force veteran, retired veteran, I appreciate everything Mr. Ackreed did, is for getting boats and stuff for veterans to go fishing for free and things like that. And then, Mrs. Krasinski and I attended West, West, West...
Weststock.
Weststock. And I'm telling you, I'm going to echo Dr. Fieser's words about Mr. Caliphas that she had mentioned earlier tonight. What a performance. There were over 26 different bands. He had everything lined up. Soon as one band went up, the other band went up. Then they came down, another band went up. Everything from Bob Marley to Michael Jackson, it was fantastic, Madam Chair. But let me tell you something, I'm sitting there, right? Mr. Cafan is here, and Mr. Hayes is here. Halfway through, Mr. Hayes whispered in my ear, he said, Mike, do you know that before September, these students never picked up an instrument? Madam Chair, I was in awe, because the job he did with these children, and not only that, but through music, he took the popular kids and had them emerge with the kids that weren't popular. Before you know it, the whole music department became popular. I just want to say, I'm going to echo Dr. Fieser's words about Mr. Caliphas. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Mrs. Krasinski?
I had the opportunity to attend not only Weststock, but a number of concerts, end-of-year concerts, string concerts, middle school and high school concerts. I was amazed at the talent that our students have in this system, and I think that we should be promoting this out to the community and inviting them in, not just parents of these kids, but the entire community, because they're great. They're great evenings of music to watch, and these kids are really talented, very much so.
Do we put that in the newspapers? Do we publish a list of the, something you might?
No. I mean, I was about to say, first of all, we hardly use the newspapers, and in as far as putting it in the, if you're talking about like the Milford Mirror or the Connecticut Post or something like that.
Like the upcoming events, community events, they have a community events calendar.
Right, there would be so many things. I mean, we certainly could do that, but there's so many different events, I suspect they're not going to want all of that, but we certainly could do it. I mean, it's all on the website, but you have to go into the individual schools, or go into the district calendar, but, so maybe there's another way that we can, we could do something.
Boats and stuff.
It's a matter of also just sending it out to various groups around the city where people would see it, or maybe restaurants where they would see, you know, sometimes you go in, et cetera, and you see, you know, fall, fall events, you know, kind of thing.
Okay, that's a good idea. Any other board comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion for executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss salaries for the Assistant Superintendent and Chief Operations Officer, and Dr. Fieser is invited into the session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned into public, uh, executive session. There we go. Jeff's coming. Mr. Burke's coming.
And I, I don't know how much it is needed.
$600, I think.
Yeah, okay. At least I did, because my son started his first shift today.
Okay, we're back. Is everybody here? We're back in public session at 9:32 PM. Mrs., Mr. Vice, a motion?
Yes, we have a motion here. I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approve a salary increase of 2.3% for Mr. Richatelli and Mr. Burke effective July 1, 2016.
A second.
A second by Mrs. Federico. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion to adjourn?
Yep, motion to adjourn.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned.